I have an employee seeking medical treatment right now for falling this morning. At home. Yeah, we said go to the doctor. She was in terrible pain. It was raining this morning when I got here. And they did have ice melt down, but yeah, it's just not. It is. Sidewalks from the melting and that they they need to push the snow away from the sides of the sidewalk so it doesn't get that far. Yes, um, I have an employee who's seeking medical attention right now because she fell this morning. She barely could make it into the office. She came in and she says, I gotta leave. She fell down the stairs at her house on ice. She fell down the stairs at her house from the ice. At her house. No, not here, no. No, no, no. Well, we have had two of those this summer or this winter, though, two employees that have turned in workers' comp claims for falling on the ice here.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Huntington County Board of Commissioners to order. It's Tuesday, March first, 2022. Cindy, would you lead us?
Let's look at this to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice, law.
All right. I will just note that we are streaming live on YouTube, and if you have a cell phone, if you would silence it, if you need to take a call, if you could step out of in the retunda, it'd be much appreciated. Item number two, call for public comment. We still will take calls for items that are not on the agenda for information only. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners? Item number four, action to approve the March first, twenty twenty two agenda. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the February twenty second, twenty twenty two minutes of the Huntington County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Gable, second by Johnson. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. We'll move on then to monthly reports. Extension. Good morning, Jody.
Sit on. Yes, all right. Well, Farm Show was well attended as we were searching for more food by the end of the week, so it's hard to prepare when you're planning with twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. You know, it's kind of hard to plan who's gonna be there. So a big thank you to all of our volunteers who helped in our two lunch counters and help with forage display exhibits as we did have a few of display exhibits this year back for the first time in many years. So I think it was two thousand sixteen was the last time we had exhibits there, so. Um, the forage leaders.
They, you know, we've had the food goose out there for years and years. What do you do with the revenue that's because I've I've had people ask me what.
We usually have signs up, they go for scholarships trips. We use it for, you know, our programs that we have, educational programs that we have, helping with shooting sports and clover buds and things like that, so.
And it does yield a pretty good return.
Some years, not always. Not always, yeah. Depends on a blizzard or, you know, things like that. So this year seemed to be well attended, so I think we didn't really have a big storm this year, so that. Oh, yeah, right to our county, yes. We send, we're probably one of the few counties that send a kid to Citizen Washington Focus trip in DC fully funded. Most kids have to pay a portion of it, you know, a large sum of it. When I attended it, when I when I volunteered, a lot of the families had to pay their own, you know, so our forage leaders paid for those trips, so. Through those, through those funding funds. The forage leaders will hopefully have a lunch counter at the home builders that the clubs will work this weekend, so we'll have a snack bar out at in the North Expo this weekend pending the weather.
Jody, I might just ask, so how, what was the reception of not having the food over in?
I haven't heard anything more. We tried to adapt and get everything over to their to all the vendors over there. We had coffee and rolls every morning and we had to-go meals for them and stuff too, so we had quite a few orders for to-go meals, so. Some people didn't realize it wasn't even there and because some of the vendors were new there too, but we tried to accommodate all of them that were over there. So I haven't heard from the chamber about it yet either, so. Not sure, but our other lunch counters were busy. We just couldn't find the manpower. And we're grateful for all the banks and people that send people to help help us during that week too. The Northeast Forage Advisors have planned the Forage Regional Teen Dash that is supposed to be happening this weekend at Lake Area Technical College. We have almost forty some kids coming, so we've already kind of planning on what's gonna be the weather and outlook and how to get ahold of them if we decide to cancel. Our next one will be April thirtieth, so we do have another one coming up that we can move that to. So a virtual kid care is being planned by our Northeast Forage Advisors. This will be a virtual series that'll begin on March twenty first. We did one last year like this also. We have kids registering for it right now, and it's supposed to go through the registration, go through this week, and then we'll have six weeks this year instead of four of virtual babysitting clinic. Not sure. I might hold one in our in the county also, still deciding on that yet. And then I'll be helping with women in science and men in science at L H T C on March fourteenth. And that is for eighth grade youth that'll be coming from local areas. So we've been planning speakers and all such things for quite a while. Clover buds and shooting sports are going well. We just finished match one and results are being edited. Our big shooting sports program that we always entered all of our data into has failed, and so we're sending it all through Excel, so we just had some mistakes, and so we're waiting to see. We did have some kids in the top five, so hopefully they'll stay in the top five for that, so waiting for those results. Once March fifteen hits, kids can start signing up for state shoot. That will be the end of April. Working on Y Q C A, that's Youth Quality Care of Animals, and that begins soon along with summer programming, so. March is a busy month, so.
Very good. Any questions for Jody?
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next, we will move up to the community health nurse, and they have us in-house today. Appreciate that. We do have a report, but just let you introduce yourselves.
All right. My name is Cody. I'm the community health nurse. I've been here for a little over three years now. And this is Sarah Brasskamp. She is our new dietitian that started in October with us. Overall, with our case numbers are down just slightly from the fiscal year, and our fiscal years run July through June, so fiscal year of twenty twenty one. The number of pregnant women that we have on stage is pretty consistent, though we have seen some drop as children turn the age five, they fall off the program. So numbers are down just a little bit, but pregnant wives, their numbers are fairly consistent, even some months have been up a little bit. There was an increase for the amount of money that everybody gets either pregnant, postpartum, or kids one through five that increased for the amount of money they get for fresh frozen or canned fruits and vegetables, and that is can has stayed increased. Currently, the waiver is through the end of March, and we haven't heard of anything after that of point. We're continuing to do phone appointments for clients that need to do phone appointments. We do encourage everybody to come into the office, though. We do have some people that just don't like to come out still because of COVID or if the weather is bad or if they have sick kids for other reasons, we are still able to do things over the phone through then. That waiver is through June, through the end of June. And we normally don't hear extensions on that till right towards the end, so we that first implemented, we've been doing it for over a year now, so. We continue to do immunizations in our office. We had a super big increase of school immunizations and immunizations overall in August and July of this year. A lot of the schools that sent out reminders to the students that are needed for kindergarten and sixth grade immunizations, the clinics were very backed up and stuff with COVID, so. I put in here, August of twenty to September of twenty, we only did fifty-three immunizations, and August of twenty-one through July of twenty-one, we did a hundred fifty-seven immunizations, so we had a very large influx there, yes. We did our three-state flu clinics for state employees. We do still have flu vaccine available in our office that we are able to build certain certain insurances. Flu season normally spikes in February, so flu season's not over yet. School saves services. Yeah. We're not quite done with it yet, but hopefully on the downhill slide. I completed school services for St. Martin's Florence and Henry. I still have school services that I'm completing for Great Plains and for Waverly. I actually just scheduled Waverly's next service that will be in at the end of March. We're just doing different education topics with them. Baby care, we continue to see all our pregnant women all throughout their pregnancy and postpartum leave. Again, we are doing phone appointments for them as well. We continue to distribute the pack and plays and also distribute car seats to needed families. Staffing wise, our previous dietitian took an advancement, so Sarah Brasskamp filled that position. And we recently just hired a new nurse, Kaya. She will be starting next Wednesday, the ninth. She'll be starting. So her and Liza Lineman, who has been helping out, will split the other full-time position in our office, so. That will be a super exciting. Training wise, all staff in the office had completed a extensive breastfeeding training. We just completed that Friday was our last day that we did that, so we are all now certified as breastfeeding experts, which will help us be able to kind of troubleshoot with complications or troubles, give some better breastfeeding education to our moms. Other things, we have free COVID tests in our office that are available to anybody. We just ask if anybody's wanting them, just to give our office a call. We normally will set them with the numbers that they're wanting, set them up front in our front entryway, which is normally locked, so they can just come and grab them. We just have our back entryway open now, so we're kind of able to control the traffic and keep separate sick from healthy people in our office, so. Otherwise, things are going well.
Were you able to get enough vaccine for, you know, that influx?
It was, yes. No, so I normally, when I do ordering for the years, I normally like look back at the previous year. So we, I definitely didn't have enough ordered, but we were able to borrow from other clinics, other community health offices, and then we were able actually, the state let us put in a an order early, which helped cover things, but yes, we were, I was definitely not ready for that large of an influx, but we did have enough. Yep, yep, we didn't have to turn anybody away, so.
Did the other health clinics in other communities see that same situation?
Yeah, I think they were noticing they were just like out so far as far as whether people were getting in for just like well, child visits or just being sick or things like that, so. We were able to get them in a little bit sooner, and I know some of the schools had sent the letters out a little late, so that some of the parents were in a little bit of a panic, so we were able to kind of help fill that gap.
Sounds good.
Yes. As far as going forward, we have the full approval to continue to come to these meetings. I know previously we were only coming once or twice a year, but sending a report four times a year. What is your guys' thoughts? We can kind of do whatever. If you want us to come back and present every, you know, quarter. Yes, we'd like to come as well. I was glad that we were able to come, yes.
Questions may arise as you go through things, so yeah, if you guys are able to, that'd be great.
Yep, perfect. Okay, so does it work just to do like March and June, September and December? Does that work? Perfect. I will do something. Awesome.
You know, I don't come to your facility because I I'm not sick. I don't need anything, you know, and I feel like if I go there, I'm intruding.
No, we welcome everyone.
It's nice for you to come here, meet and see us. Yes. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, you're welcome. When I come in June, I will bring our new nurse Kyle with us as well.
To meet your new staff.
Yes, yes, we'll do.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the Veterans Service Officer with Todd. He has a report in your packet as well.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm gonna give you this little envelope here. We'll talk about this a little later, just so you guys can kind of see what we have there to offer, but so starting off, we had two D V two D A V transports for February. We currently don't have anything scheduled for March from that standpoint. I did receive a phone call from the VA Department of Volunteer Services. Our van is in Sioux Falls. They are working to get the required paperwork completed. We will be contacting them again on the fourteenth of March and see where they're at with that. That's basically what she said. Call us back on the fourteenth and we'll let you know more. So there's that app, and we also are going to be asking about the process, you know, of getting the title back for the Explorer and what we're gonna do with that from that standpoint. I believe Natalie will be announcing the Deputy V S O position. That's gonna be open from one through thirty-one March. Peg's last day, she has submitted her letter. Is gonna be thirty-one July of twenty-two. I just asked Cindy for the start date. I think she's gonna get that. I'm gonna. Oh, I I haven't looked at my email from that standpoint.
All right, she started with us as a three-quarter employee on.
I think she's about twenty, twenty-nine years service.
Did not put her letter of resignation on because I didn't get it in time for the agenda. So that's coming next week. She was hired at three-quarter time on June twelfth, nineteen ninety-two, and she went full-time on August first, nineteen ninety-three.
So she have a boatload of vacation built up?
Kind of the tentative plan right now would be that she'll probably work most of June, and then we'll be looking at to, she'll probably work a couple of days in July, but most of July will be vacation time from that standpoint. So she will end in the thirty-first with, should have a zero balance from that standpoint. Future. Again, once we get the vehicle here, the new D A V vehicle, we will, again, we'll do a press release and a rollout to get the different veterans organizations around that contributed and to try to get a plug into the paper about that, to say that it's it's new and. The upcoming Memorial Day was gonna be handled by the American Legion Post seventeen. From that standpoint, the thing that I just handed around here is a VA government medallion. It's basically for privately purchased headstones for deceased veterans after April sixth of nineteen seventy, regardless of their date of death. So started back where you can get flat bronzes. Basically, if a gravestone or a grave marker is not marked with a flat bronze, they can get that, but if it's a privately headstone, they could get this on there or put that on there. That is, as long as they come in and they qualify, there's a few qualifications, but it's pretty liberal from those qualifications. A veteran that has a private headstone that has no other VA or veteran marking, they could get that put on there from that. They can just see us, or they can Google VA medallion. Go right online, and basically, as long as they have the DD two fourteen, they can do the paperwork themselves, but again, we're always here to assist and help from that standpoint. I'll be talking about that here the next couple of weeks on the radio also, but with March being Women's History Month, I would like to say thank you to the more than two thousand, two hundred thousand women currently serving in the armed forces and a special thanks to more than one point nine million women veterans that have served our great nation. Along with that, another little tidbit there that I did not know this until I was reading my V F W magazine, that March twenty-ninth is Vietnam War Veteran Day. National Vietnam War Veterans Day is observed every year on March twenty-ninth. It is a way to say thank you and honor our nation's Vietnam War veterans and their families for their service and sacrifice. March twenty-ninth was chosen as natural Viet, National Vietnam War Veterans Day because it was on March twenty-ninth of nineteen seventy-three that the last US combat troops departed the Republic of Vietnam. Other than that, I do have a travel request. I don't know if I can bump that up or do I need to stay around later on?
I don't think you need to stick around.
Okay. Is there any questions? Thank you. Have a good day.
As well, thank you.
All right. Item number seven, action to approve the twenty twenty-two rates for weed chemicals and hourly spraying rates. I don't know, Steve was gonna be here. That is in our packet, so. Anything he wanted to draw our attention to?
To approve them. I have looked them over and 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 I'm sure that they have been gone over. Steve has gone over them thoroughly. And with the price going up and down and jumping, generally not down, mostly just up. I would, I would move to approve them.
We are, I'll just add a little comment to that. After doing a little pricing of chemicals for my own use on my homestead at various places, we're very fortunate to get these prices retailers double this.
Someone want to second the motion? All right, second by Gable. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve agreement with Banner Associates for Road Project Engineering Services, and Rick Goodmorning is here to explain that to us.
Good morning. This is to get some things fixed. There's eight miles altogether. The first one is County Road nine B, which goes by the bus bar. That needs some work definitely, yep. This is a full-depth reclamation that I want to do. Adding base one to it, kind of like what we did on the Wind Farm project and then to stabilize it and then put a mat over the top of that.
Like you're talking, grind it down.
Grind it. It'll be completely ground. And then north of Tinkertown on County Road twenty-three, there's a mile in there. We're gonna pave part of that. There's water on both sides of the road. And we were gonna pave that last summer, and we had it ground, and then it got soft on us, so we did a lot of digging out. We may have to haul some more material in there, but that'll be a full-depth reclamation project on that whole mile up to the curve. And then the rest is MicroSeal on Charlie's Road, which is County Road seventeen from State Highway twenty up to County Road six, and then on six A west of State Highway twenty going towards Medicine Lake. There's three miles in each section that I wanted to to try and straighten that up because the only other project that we could do on like seventeen would be mill it and overlay it. That doesn't really solve any of our issues, and hopefully we can get them solve this, and it'll be all depend on what are we coming at for a bid on this, if we can get it all done. Because like you just mentioned, the price of everything has went up a little bit, so.
Yes, well, we can do what we can do, I guess, but need to find out what it's gonna cost first.
Yep, and Banner will draw up the plans and they'll take care of the.
There's two two prices on the back on the second. What is the total price for that?
Right now, it would be thirty-one thousand. The added price will be once the project starts, it'll be per hour and then more testing, so it could be up to that.
So we do, we need to include both of these amounts today? It's my question.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm looking, maybe I'm just missing it. Looking at the
from the second page.
Realized it was the second page when I copied it to you. I didn't realize it was front and back, so I missed that second page.
So this, so we're talking about engineering, you know, service, project, project management, yeah, service. So thirty-one thousand is to put it all together, bid it, and then after that, it could be up to that fifty thousand. Depending on how much the engineer has to be out there on the project, and this, this is budgeted. Yeah, okay, this is a budgeted.
Make a motion to approve.
Second by Gable, so the total amount then is eighty-one. Is that what we're looking at?
It could be that, like I said.
Up two.
The first one, the thirty-one is solid. The next one is just as it does.
Up two, but not to exceed.
Where's my?
I don't know. Did you pass your?
Yeah, I pass. I think that.
I just gave him to Rip then.
I thought he gave it to those guys.
Is that what we want the motion to read as?
Well, the thirty-one is solid, and then others, the fifty thousand. So what's the best way then for that motion? The thirty-one is a solid. That one we know for sure. Do you want two separate, and that's the other one could be up to fifty for the second?
Yes.
Second phase of it.
I mean, this is all one motion, yeah, but yes, yeah, thirty-one thousand for engineering and up to fifty thousand for construction.
So my motion is to not to exceed eighty-one thousand for the total.
Yep, I'll word it like.
It'd be up to fifty on the second. So it's thirty-one and then up to fifty on the second.
So does that include the thirty-one thousand?
Yes, I said the thirty-one, and then the second phase is up to fifty. Yes, yeah.
I confuse things.
Just for clarification. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries.
I'm glad we're starting to get to work on that road there by the bus bar. It's been breaking up for.
Yeah. It's in tough shape.
There's a lot of traffic on that road.
It had a lot of damage when their projects were built in the city limits, so. And I'm also working with the city to help chip in a little on that, so.
Yeah, they haven't annexed that in or whatever.
Well, there's a quarter of it that's annexed in on the east side of our county road for the first half mile from Fourteenth Avenue.
By Bob Fox's place, right?
Yep, that's annexed in, so I already talked to the street department about.
Because when they annex, they only do half the road.
Yeah, it's kind of a strange deal.
How, what was your response? I mean, I'd like to see it. We're gonna do it. I'd like to see it all done.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do it. We're just trying to get the city to help chip in on it, so. Yep, thank you. Anything else?
No, I think we're good. All right, we'll move on then to item number nine, action to approve abatement applications. All right, so we don't have nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Okay, we'll move on then to travel requests. Item number thirteen.
Service officer to attend the South Dakota Department Affairs Mini Training Conference.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. All right, item number fourteen, public notices, possible quorum of commissioners at the Sioux Valley Commissioner Association Meeting. Cindy, when do you need to know?
I need to know by March, before March eleventh, if you intend to go to that meeting.
I will be.
Yeah, I found.
That's all I have for public notices. Anyone else have anything? Charles, probably Republican meeting, I would think at noon. There could be a possible forum there. Any other items that anyone can think of?
Did you mention the home show?
Oh, no, the home show. That is another event that there could very well be a possible quorum of commissioners at. So that's this Saturday, Sunday. Oh, not the Home Show. That is another event that there could very well be a possible quorum of commissioners at. So that's this Saturday, Sunday.
There wouldn't be a quorum at any of these, but tonight is the township annual meeting, so all the townships are.
This afternoon, tonight, yeah.
Tonight is, is their night, so.
Yeah.
If you would sit in on your local township meeting, they would appreciate it.
All right. Do we have any old business? How about new business? Anything for the open? We do have a need. Yes, we do have a need for an executive session under item number one, personnel. Correct, Natalie? So we would look for a motion a second to go into executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. There will be no, uh, anything afterwards as far as it starts for discussion only. No action.